Six oh one, and the Planning Commission is in order. Thank you, welcome to the Planning Commission meeting, and may we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
Kate, may we have a roll call, please?
Gary Cunningham.
Here.
Sean Keir.
Here.
Bruce Robinson.
Here.
Miles Lessinger.
Here.
And Patty Crowen and Doug Bryson are both absent and excused, and Steve Griffiths.
Here.
Thank you.
Are there any agenda changes or revisions?
No, we're on it.
We received the minutes from Kate, I say a motion to approve them.
I approve the minutes of January seventeenth meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have nobody here in the public to talk on non-agenda items, so we have no final orders tonight, no public hearings and deliberations, no full business scheduled, so we're now on to new business, and we will continue our Planning Commission training. Mr. Thompson?
Continuation of from the last meeting, these are the next two chapters tonight. Our IT people asked me to tell you while this is playing to make sure you're not near your microphone, so that nothing gets picked up. But that will commence.
Comprehensive plans. Comprehensive plans identify each community's type, location, and intensity of future development. Depending on the size of the jurisdiction, plans may be subject to periodic review by DLCD, the State Department of Land Conservation and Development. They are expected to accommodate changing needs over time. Where applicable, comprehensive plans include policy guidance for specific natural resources such as rivers, wetlands, forests, farmland, rangeland, estuaries, shorelands, beaches, and dunes. Preparation. The process to prepare each comprehensive plan requires several steps. They may overlap and do not necessarily take place in this specific order. Identifying current conditions and issues. Collecting data. Setting goals. And preparing the plan. When identifying current conditions and issues, it is important to undertake early and thorough public involvement efforts with citizens, local businesses, community organizations, and neighborhood leaders. Public engagement may occur in many ways, from open houses, town hall meetings and workshops, to coffee clashes and personal interviews. Websites, email, and other online techniques help broaden public outreach and promote civic engagement. The second task, data collection, also contributes to identifying issues. Information is most often available from governmental agencies, community resources such as housing inventories and current and previous policies and plans. After careful review and analysis, the data can show emerging patterns that may help to predict future conditions. Examples include population projections and economic forecasts. Information about natural hazards, geology, and topography can help guide decisions about where future development should occur. The third step is to set goals. What is the community's vision? What kind of community do people favor? How much land should be set aside for future housing needs? Industrial development? Natural resource protection? Recreation? Other uses? The resolution of many of these issues will involve application of requirements contained in statewide planning goals and state statutes. The fourth and final step is to prepare or update the comprehensive plan. The document that is reviewed and adopted by the governing body. The plan covers public involvement, key goals and focus areas, and implementation measures. The planning process may require several drafts and take considerable time and effort. Adoption. Adoption of the comprehensive plan is considered a legislative action. It follows public hearings, which provide an opportunity for formal public testimony and final approval by the city council or county commission. After state review and acknowledgment, the comprehensive plan becomes the community's guiding policy statement regarding land use and development. Implementation. Comprehensive plans are implemented through land use regulations such as zoning ordinances and development codes. Other measures may include capital improvement programs, design review ordinances, intergovernmental agreements, refinement plans, and special area management plans. Updates, amendments, and periodic review. State law, ORS 197.628, establishes procedures for periodic review of comprehensive plans and land use regulations. This process is mandatory for some more populated jurisdictions and is optional for others. The purpose of this process is to ensure that comprehensive plans and land use regulations are appropriate for the community, given any changes in local, regional, and state conditions, and continue to comply with the statewide planning goals. Statewide planning goal two requires all comprehensive plans to contain a schedule for review and revision on a periodic basis. Plans must continue to provide sufficient land for projected population growth and development, and ensure that such growth and development is supported by adequate transportation and public facility infrastructure. Needed amendments must go through the adoption process described previously. Zoning. The purpose of a zoning ordinance is to carry out the policies and designations contained in the comprehensive plan. Zoning ordinances divide community into various land use zoning districts, such as R1 residential or C1 commercial. Each specific zone lists uses and activities allowed outright, allowed with conditions, or prohibited. Zones delineate areas where similar types of development are permitted and others are not. For example, a mixed-use housing commercial district permits a variety of housing types and businesses, but may not allow large-scale industrial manufacturing. Zones can separate conflicting land uses, protect property values, improve predictability in decision-making, increase efficiency of public services, and protect natural resources or special types of land. Zoning ordinances also contain procedures for actions requiring review or hearings, for amendments to the ordinance or map, and for enforcement. Zoning map. The zoning map is a visual and spatial planning tool that implements the comprehensive plan. The map shows the location and boundaries of base zones and overlay zones covering all geographical areas of a city or county. The zoning map and any changes to zoning designations over time must be consistent with policies and designations in the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan and zoning map may be very similar, but not necessarily identical. Zone types. Basic zone designations typically include general categories of uses such as residential, commercial, industrial, public, farm, forest, and rural residential. Overlay zones typically apply to floodplain and natural hazard areas, specific natural resource areas, or special use areas such as airports. Within the basic zone categories, communities often include several more specific zones. For example, subcategories of residential zoning may include single-family, multifamily, medium-density, and high-density. While zoning categories are similar statewide, each community creates its own based on the desired development pattern and policy framework contained in the comprehensive plan. Conditional uses and variances. Local governments may allow certain uses in a zone subject to review and special conditions. The zoning ordinance lists conditional uses that may be authorized within each zone. Conditions of approval may be specified by the zone or imposed by a decision-maker based on the results of a public review and hearing. Although in this case, the decision-maker will need to justify special conditions by citing an overarching policy or requirement. A variance allows a local government to modify some requirements to account for unique circumstances based on standards outlined in the zoning ordinance. Variances may reduce lot size requirements or coverage standards, off-street parking requirements, or structural setbacks. Variances do not allow uses not otherwise authorized in a zoning category. Conditional use provisions generally apply to uses or activities that have potential adverse impacts or compatibility issues, and therefore require review. In many cases, adverse impacts and compatibility issues can be resolved or minimized by the application of conditions or limitations. Zoning ordinances specifically list the types of uses and activities that may be authorized through the conditional use review process. Some types of conditional uses, such as those allowed within exclusive farm use zones, are subject to specific state requirements. Variance provisions provide the opportunity to modify regulations due to unusual circumstances, such as the lot configuration, in order to allow the same use as similarly situated nearby property. For example, a variance may be requested to allow a reduced setback for a home built on an unusually shaped lot. Variances are subject to specific and rigorous approval standards outlined in the zoning ordinance. Decisions require evidence and findings demonstrating the standards are met. Overlay zones. Overlay zones modify the regulations in a base zone by allowing or limiting uses or adding specific requirements. For example, an area may be zoned commercial and also be included in a designed overlay zone to meet certain community goals. Among the many types of overlay zones are those for floodplains or other hazards, riparian areas or environmental considerations, future urban uses, greenways, main streets, airports, and transportation corridors. Alternatives to conventional zoning. Euclidean zoning is the most common zoning ordinance framework used in the United States. The term Euclidean is from the 1926 U.S. Supreme Court case Village of Euclid, Ohio versus Ambler Realty Company. This style of zoning segregates land uses into use categories based on the type and intensity of allowed uses and activities. Residential zones typically allow the lowest-intensity uses, and industrial zones typically allow the highest-intensity uses. Over time, many communities have chosen to abandon this tiered approach in favor of more specific and exclusive zoning categories. This approach encourages more efficient uses of land, public facilities, and transit. Local governments also are increasingly considering performance zoning, also known as effects-based planning, and incentive zoning. Both establish goals and criteria for development and are considered more flexible than more conventional zoning. Another alternative, mixed-use zoning, allows compatible but different types of uses in a single area. A mix of housing, retail, and offices often results in a compact pedestrian-friendly development pattern with more efficient infrastructure and stronger economic ties within the community. Mixed-use areas can be included within form-based codes. These codes regulate development form rather than land use. For example, form-based codes in a densely developed area typically include smaller setbacks, higher residential density, and improved pedestrian circulation. DLCD has prepared a model code for use by small cities and provides technical assistance to local governments. For information about the Model Code or Code Assistance Program, contact the regional representative for your area. CC and Rs, or covenants, conditions, and restrictions, are also known as private zoning. They are often established and enforced by a homeowner's association formed by the developer. The goal is to maintain high standards of development by prohibiting activities that could degrade the appearance or security of the development. Covenants restricting ownership in the development by certain classes or races of people are illegal. Land divisions. Under Oregon law, there are two categories of land divisions: partitions and subdivisions. A partition divides a unit of land into two or three parcels. A subdivision divides a unit of land into four or more lots. Minimum lot size. Minimum lot size is the smallest area allowed for a lot or parcel. In cities, this is the smallest area of land in a particular zone on which a structure may be built. Minimum lot sizes are typically expressed in square feet in urban zones and in acres in rural zones. The minimum lot size in an area determines the density of allowable development. Typical minimum residential lot sizes in urban areas are between 5,000 and 20,000 square feet. In rural farm and forest zones, they are between 80 and 160 acres, and in rural residential areas between 2 and 10 acres. For reference, 1 acre is 43,560 square feet. If it were square, it would be approximately 209 feet on each side, about the size of a small city block. Plans and Plats. Partitions and subdivisions undergo two stages of review and approval. A tentative or preliminary plan is a proposal that is reviewed by local officials to ensure conformance with code or ordinance requirements and identify planning issues or problems. After it is approved, the tentative or preliminary plan becomes a final plat with accurate survey lines and dimensions of lots, streets, utilities, and other physical features. This final plat is officially recorded with the county. Detailed standards and procedures governing partitions and subdivisions are found in ORS Chapter 92. We've come to the end of Chapter 3. Now that you've heard information about this subject, how would you handle a possible real situation? Please click on the Chapter Scenarios button to briefly check your knowledge.
I'm going to skip the questions, go on to the next chapter.
Welcome to Chapter 4, Making Land Use Decisions. In this section, we discuss the different types of land use decisions made by city and county government, time requirements for these decisions, and the public hearing and appeals processes. We've divided them into specific sections for easy reference. It's important to note that this chapter is only a general summary of planning procedures and requirements. For information about a specific statute, legal precedent, goal, or rule, cities and counties should contact the appropriate governmental agency. If you have legal issues or concerns, consult an attorney who specializes in land use law. Local Land Use Decisions. According to state law, there are three main types of land use decisions: legislative, quasi-judicial, and ministerial. In most cases, public notice is required. Public hearings are required for certain types of decisions. Although local governments must establish procedures and requirements consistent with state statutes, they have considerable flexibility in assigning responsibility for decisions. For example, in many cases, staff makes the initial decision, subject to appeal to the Planning Commission. Some Planning Commission decisions may be appealed to the governing body. Some jurisdictions employ hearings officers to make certain types of land use decisions which are then subject to appeal to the Planning Commission or governing body. In all cases, local government land use decisions may be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals or LUBA. All decisions must be consistent with state statutes, the statewide planning goals, case law, and other applicable legal requirements. Limited land use decisions and expedited land divisions are special categories of local decisions that are subject to specific procedures and standards outlined in state statutes. Legislative Land Use Decisions. Legislative decisions establish local land use policies. They typically become part of the comprehensive plan or zoning code. In the case of map designations, legislative decisions are applicable to broad geographical areas rather than single properties or sites. In most communities, proposed legislative amendments to the comprehensive plan or zoning codes are considered first by the Planning Commission, which holds one or more public hearings. The Commission's recommendation is then considered by the governing body, which holds at least one public hearing before taking final action. Quasi-judicial Land Use Decisions. Local governmental bodies make quasi-judicial decisions when they apply existing policies or regulations to specific situations or development proposals. Other quasi-judicial decisions amend the zoning or comprehensive plan map, policies, or regulations in relation to a specific development proposal. Additional examples of quasi-judicial decisions are conditional use permits, variances, partitions, subdivisions, annexations, and road and street vacations. Ministerial Land Use Decisions. Ministerial land use decisions are made by local planning staff based on clear and objective standards and requirements applicable to a specific development proposal or factual situation. Examples include building permits for a use permitted by code, or a determination that a proposed structure meets setback or height requirements. Ministerial decisions do not require a public notice or hearing. Limited Land Use Decisions and Expedited Land Divisions. To streamline approval of relatively minor actions within an urban growth boundary, or UGB, the legislature has approved two other kinds of decisions. The first, limited land use decisions, are made by the locally designated decision-maker and are subject to procedures and notice requirements outlined in state statutes. Examples include tentative partitions, tentative subdivisions, site review, and design review. The second, expedited land divisions for residential uses within a UGB, are made by planning staff after public notice. They are subject to procedures and requirements outlined in state statutes. The local government may not hold a hearing on such an application and must make its decision within 63 days of the application. Decisions may be appealed to a referee hired by the local government, and finally to the State Court of Appeals according to state law. Process. Procedures for legislative and quasi-judicial land use decisions are outlined in statutes and interpreted through case law. These procedures are ultimately incorporated into local plans and ordinances. Legislative procedures are generally more flexible than quasi-judicial procedures because they deal with relatively broad public policy issues. Quasi-judicial procedures are often more complex and specific and require due process. This is a legal term that entitles all affected parties prior notification of a proposed action and the opportunity to present and rebut evidence before an impartial tribunal. For quasi-judicial decisions, governing body members, hearings officers, and Planning Commission members should avoid or limit communications outside of the formal public hearing process. They are required to disclose any contact outside the public hearing regarding a specific case in order to provide an opportunity for rebuttal or other corrective action. The local government must maintain a record of the proceedings and adopt findings of fact regarding the reasons for their decision. Within UGBs, this process must be completed within 120 days. Outside UGBs, the process must be completed within 150 days. In both cases, there are specific provisions to extend the time limit. Land Use Application. Legislative land use decisions are subject to post-acknowledgement plan amendment or pop-up requirements contained in state statutes. For quasi-judicial land use decisions, the 120 or 150-day review process begins after the planning staff receives required application forms and supporting information that advocate for a certain land use or proposed development. Many local governments will schedule pre-application conferences with the prospective applicant. Public Notice. Notice for legislative land use decisions must be provided to the public as outlined in local procedures and must be forwarded to the Director of DLCD as required by state statute. DLCD provides notice to those who have requested to be included on the agency's notice list. For quasi-judicial decisions, specific parties must be notified at least 20 days prior to the public hearing. The applicant, property owners within 100 feet of the property if within a UGB, within 250 feet if located outside a UGB, and within 500 feet if located within a farm or forest zone, and any neighborhood or community organizations whose boundaries include the site. Some local governments also require that notice be posted on the property. Public Hearing. For legislative decisions, the Planning Commission usually holds initial hearings on a proposal before forwarding its recommendation to the governing body. Legislative decisions require final action by the governing body. Hearing procedures are relatively flexible, and there are no limitations on outside contact between decision-makers and the public. For quasi-judicial decisions, most cities and counties hold at least one hearing before the Planning Commission or hearings officer prior to forwarding a recommendation or allowing an appeal to the governing body. At the hearing, the presiding officer summarizes the procedures, and planning staff describes the case, including the applicable criteria in the comprehensive plan or zoning code and its recommendation. Applicants then present their case for approval, and others may support them. Opponents then have the opportunity to challenge the applicant's case. All parties have the right to present and rebut evidence directed toward the applicable criteria. Failure to raise an issue orally or in writing in advance of or during the hearing precludes appeal to LUBA on that issue. This is commonly referred to as the "raise it or waive it" requirement. Under state law, some types of land use decisions may be made without a hearing if notice is provided and no party requests it. Decision and Findings. Legislative decisions require a record and findings, but the requirements are less rigorous than for quasi-judicial decisions. The record must be adequate to show that the legislative action is within the legal authority of the city or county. The record must show that the jurisdiction followed applicable procedures. Legislative decisions must be consistent with substantive requirements in state statutes and the statewide planning goals. For example, an updated housing element must be consistent with ORS 197.303 to 314 and statewide planning goal 10, housing. After hearing the staff report and public testimony on an application for a quasi-judicial decision, the hearings body makes its decision. As noted before, this must be based only on applicable criteria in the local code and relevant evidence and testimony. There are four choices of action: approve the application, approve the application subject to specific conditions, deny the application, or continue the review process to obtain additional information. In this case, the applicant may need to agree to a time extension. The final decision must include findings of fact and conclusions of law that are adequate to explain the basis for the action. Draft findings are often prepared by staff and may be available in advance of the hearing. Adoption of findings may occur immediately following the hearing and include any modifications to the draft based on additional evidence and testimony. In some cases, the prevailing party, legal counsel, or staff are asked to prepare the final version of the findings, which are then adopted at a separate meeting before the time limit expires. The final decision must be based on what is known as substantial evidence that a reasonable person would rely on in reaching the decision. Appeals. Local ordinances specify how initial decisions by local staff, a hearings officer, or the Planning Commission can be appealed to the local governing body. Certain appeals are limited to evidence submitted to the initial decision. to the draft based on additional evidence and testimony. In some cases, the prevailing party, legal counsel, or staff are asked to prepare the final version of the findings, which are then adopted at a separate meeting before the time limit expires. The final decision must be based on what is known as substantial evidence that a reasonable person would rely on in reaching the decision. Appeals. Local ordinances specify how initial decisions by local staff, a hearings officer, or the planning commission can be appealed to the local governing body. Certain appeals are limited to evidence submitted to the initial decision maker and may include an opportunity for additional oral or written argument. As we have noted before, only parties that have stated their case before the local government have twenty-one days to file a notice of intent to appeal with Luba. Following this filing and during a timeframe prescribed by law, the local government must provide the complete record of the proceedings with the board. Once the record is filed and accepted, the petitioner and respondents file their briefs with the board. Luba will hear oral arguments from the parties and issue a written opinion that either affirms, reverses, or remands the decision for additional consideration. The board's decision may be appealed to the Court of Appeals, or finally, to the Oregon Supreme Court. Specific timelines and state law provide for a speedy review of land use decisions and increase certainty for both the community and applicant. Alternatives to formal appeals include mediation, which can save all parties time and money. For more information on mediation assistance, contact DLCD. Staff role. Planning staff are usually the first individuals an applicant meets. They are responsible for explaining all procedures and requirements, reviewing the application for completeness, and preparing the staff report. Staff presents its report and recommendation to the decision maker. Often, the staff recommendation is accepted with or without conditions. Staff generally prepares the final decision documents and findings of fact documenting the reasoning to support the decision. A pre-application conference with prospective applicants may help them understand the procedures and requirements for the land use proposal, including any additional research or information that may be needed. In some cases, applicants may be encouraged to meet with neighborhood groups or other affected parties to review their proposal. Staff prepares a public notice for proposed land use decisions that describes the location of the subject property, the nature of the application, and the proposed use. The notice also explains criteria from the comprehensive plan and land use regulations that pertain to the application, the date, time, and location of the public hearing, the name of a local government representative to contact, and requirements for public testimony and how the hearing is conducted. When a staff report is prepared, it must be made available to all interested parties seven days prior to the public hearing. In some cases, the staff report includes draft findings explaining the reasoning for the recommended decision. As noted earlier, Luba may remand or return a case to the local government for additional review. If a decision is remanded, the local government must decide whether to proceed based on the existing record or to allow additional evidence and testimony. Legal requirements related to remand may be complicated. Staff should work with their legal counsel to define procedures and requirements before the remand is formally considered. Ex parte contact, bias, and conflicts of interest. An ex parte contact occurs when a decision maker receives information, discusses the land use application, or visits the cited question outside the formal public hearing. This does not include discussions with and information received from staff. Failure to disclose such contact may result in reversal or remand of the decision. If ex parte contact does occur, the decision maker must disclose it on the record at the hearing, describe the circumstances under which it occurred, and present any new evidence introduced through that contact. The presiding officer must give parties the opportunity to rebut the substance of the ex parte contact. State statutes clearly delineate requirements for ex parte contacts. Bias. Bias occurs when decision makers have a prior judgment of the case that prevents them from making an objective decision based on the facts. Such decision makers should excuse themselves from the proceedings. Even though bias is often subjective, not all personal views or positions are actual bias in the eyes of the law. While it is not unusual for decision makers to have a perspective or background, the threshold test is if this will influence their decision. Decision makers should carefully consider any issues related to their personal bias and be prepared to step aside if necessary. Conflict of interest. A conflict of interest occurs if any action by public officials results in financial gain or loss to themselves or a relative or business associate. According to state law, it must be disclosed. There are two types of conflicts of interest: actual and potential. An actual conflict of interest is one that would occur as a result of the decision. If that is likely, the decision maker must disclose it and not participate in the decision. A potential conflict is one that could occur as a result of the decision. In that case, disclosure is still required, but the decision maker may participate in the decision. Legal issues related to ex parte contacts, bias, or conflicts of interest. Decision makers should consult with the local government's legal counsel if they have any questions or concerns regarding ex parte contacts, bias, or conflicts of interest. We've come to the end of Chapter Four. Now that you've heard information about this subject, how would you handle a possible real situation? Please click on the "Chapter Scenarios" button.
So that's the end of today's chapters. I think that the city attorney, I'm going to have more on some legal issues. You have in your package tonight some information from him and a memo going into that.
Thank you, Richard. Mr. Appicola?
You should have an update to the quasi judicial procedures handout that has 2017 on it. And you just saw in the video a little synopsis of quasi judicial procedures, so I won't repeat that. I'd just like to highlight a few issues, and obviously, you can read the memo. If you have any questions, feel free to contact me. Again, I'm here to provide advice. Probably the most important thing I could tell you about quasi judicial procedures, any procedures actually legislative quasi judicial is, it's okay to talk to your staff. So, in the context of quasi judicial decisions, when you're acting like a judge, you can consult with your staff, your planners, and with your legal counsel to gain some assistance in applying the facts in the record to the applicable law. So, a lot of people sometimes have difficulty applying the facts to the law, and that's where lawyers can help. And in quasi judicial procedures, that's really your main job. So, you have a couple of examples in the video about what is quasi judicial, a variance application, a specific amendment concerning a specific property, conditional use approval, where you have lots of neighbors come in and testify. Essentially, quasi judicial is when you have a specific application, and it is, you're applying existing criteria to the application on that particular facts, and it's not about fifty properties, it's about one property. You're not writing new laws, you're applying existing laws, and it's something that somebody has applied for and expects a decision. So, the difference would be in a legislative proceeding, the planning commission could say, "Hey, let's regulate, you know, dangerous dogs," or something. Actually, you wouldn't do that, but let's say, "Let's add a provision to the code about accessory dwellings." And it gets to the city council, the city council does not have to adopt it. So, one of the things you can recognize that a decision is not quasi judicial is if it has to be finished. So, you can decide not to adopt new legislation, and there is no appeal from a decision not to adopt new legislation. As the planning commission, you don't actually have the final decision on legislation, you just make a recommendation to the city council. But if someone applies for something, apply for a conditional use application or a variance, they expect a decision at the end of that process, and as you saw, there are time limits on when we have to make that final decision. So, essentially, that quasi judicial is you're applying known criterion to facts submitted during the hearing. You're acting like a judge, quasi judicial. The way you do that is you read the staff report, and the staff has done the task or performed the task of writing findings, helping you to apply the facts to the law. Staff generally identifies the applicable regulation, what is the applicable criterion, and then will generally point out to you the evidence in the record that goes to each criterion. And by the end of the hearing, you should be able to make the, do the analysis of applying the facts to the law and saying yes or no. Simple, you know, criterion like "there shall be a twenty-foot front yard setback." Not typically something that would require a hearing, but just for as an example, you have to have a twenty-foot front yard setback. The application and the evidence in the record shows that they've only set back ten feet. Well, applying the facts to the law, you would come to the decision that it's in noncompliance. They have not met the applicable criterion. In land use specifically, in hearings, you will have, the criterion are usually more discretionary. It's not usually that ten-foot, twenty-foot kind of a criterion, it's more like, is the application, will it adversely affect the livability of the surrounding neighborhood? Or something like that. It's a more discretionary decision, it requires more interpretation. During the hearing, you can ask your planning director about "how do we interpret this?" and usually, your staff will have outlined, especially in a case of a criterion with some discretion, "how we have interpreted it." So, generally, the quasi judicial proceedings require the observance of procedural safeguards. And in the video, you see that that means impartial decision maker, and an impartial decision maker is typically one that is free of bias and prejudgment, as well as financial conflicts of interest. And so, we also free of ex parte communications. That is, it's fair for the participants in a proceeding to know the basis upon which, the factual basis upon which a decision is made. So, ex parte is just simply outside of the hearing, you receive evidence that's pertinent to the decision. If you receive all kinds of evidence outside of the hearing, it doesn't necessarily qualify as an ex parte communication unless it's relevant to the hearing. If the applicant approaches you, and you're going to be acting as the judge, like a judge in considering their application, it's generally a bad idea to talk to them, and certainly a bad idea to get information about the upcoming hearing. No one would think it would be appropriate to approach a judge and start talking to them about a case that they'll be hearing, so you should avoid ex parte communications. They are in fact substantive error and can cause you to have to repeat the hearing. I don't know about you, but one thing I hate to do is to do something over again that I've already done. So, avoid ex parte communications. If you do have an ex parte communication, there is a statutory mandatory way of dealing with it. And remember, as public officers, appointed public officers, you must comply with applicable state statutes. There's a state statute on ex parte communications, and it requires you to disclose ex parte communications, which includes site visits, but not really, but you handle site visits in exactly the same way you would any other communication. You disclose as early as possible the substance of the communication on the record. If you received information, the best thing to do is to forward it on to the planning department, and then remember to also disclose it at the hearing. As soon as it gets to the planning department into the record, it's available for people that are interested in the case to review and rebut. So, what we want to do is disclose the substance and then announce at the next available opportunity, get the information to the planning department, and then announce that they have, opponents have the opportunity to rebut the substance of that communication. So, ex parte communications, simply being informed, all parties need to be informed about the substance upon which the decision will be based. That's just basic fairness, and that's all part of procedural due process, having an impartial decision maker, and knowing the basis upon which a decision is made. Again, probably ex parte is the most important and important part of that impartial decision maker, but you sometimes rarely have challenges for bias. Bias is, I mean, when people get appointed to the planning commission or they get elected to city council, they generally have opinions about things. So, you're not expected to be completely free of bias. What you're expected to do is to set whatever bias you may have aside and make the decision based upon the facts and evidence submitted in the record as applied to the applicable law. So, someone may think that, "Well, gosh, you're an environmentalist, and this application will be destroying a certain portion of the forest or wetland or whatever, and so I'm going to challenge you for bias." Just because you may have said things in the past about the environment or in general doesn't mean that you can't make a decision. It means that you may have to state for the record, "I understand my role is to apply the facts and evidence to the applicable law, and I will, I am not, I have not prejudged this application, I will make the decision based upon the facts and evidence in the record as applied to the applicable law." If you make those statements of impartiality, you generally will go a long way to defeating bias allegations. But if during the hearing, you're berating the applicant's engineer or environmentalist when you're supposed to be the impartial judge, eh, someone might get up and make a bias challenge. If before the hearing, you're out talking to the newspaper reporters or television and talking about how horrible this application is, and you'd never vote in favor of it, all those things will come in. So, you know, again, stating your impartiality and saying you'll apply the facts to the law, that's great, and will defeat a bias challenge, but if you've dug a hole for yourself, you may not be able to get out of it. Conflict of interest, in terms of financial conflict of interest, it was covered on the video. Actual means you would be financially impacted. Potential means you could be. So, the difference is when you're actually going to be financially affected to your advantage or detriment, you have to disclose and not participate. If you could, if it's not a certainty, you simply announce that, and then you can participate. Again, these are procedural safeguards put in place to make sure that people that submit applications get a full and fair hearing. Let's see, that's bias and prejudgment, that's financial conflict of interest. The hearing itself consists of, you know, some procedural required statements, they didn't go through them, they talked about the "raise it or waive it" rule. You make statements, you list the applicable criteria at the beginning of the hearing, you make some required statements about, "Hey, raise it or waive it." You talk about whether or not, if you participate, you can request a continuance or leaving the record open. Then you hear from staff. So, your professional staff then addresses the application, they've reviewed it, they go through the applicable criterion, they go through the evidence that's been submitted by the applicant. In all cases, the applicant has the burden to demonstrate the compliance with each and every applicable criterion. It's not staff's job to do the applicant's work. The applicant, the staff is reviewing the application. So, they talked about substantial evidence, evidence a reasonable person would determine, supports a conclusion. So, if you have someone comes to the podium, they talk up- So if you have someone comes to the podium, and they talk about technical hydrological water flow issues, and you ask them, "Are you an engineer?" And they go, "Well, no, I'm a cartoonist." That probably might not be substantial competent evidence. But if someone gets up and talks in their area of expertise, their testimony generally will be deemed competent and substantial evidence. But all applications need to be supported by such evidence, competent, substantial evidence. In terms of being reviewed, the decisions of a quasi judicial body, they're going to look to see if you've followed the right procedures and you've followed them correctly, whether or not the law, the applicable law has been followed and followed correctly, and whether or not there's substantial competent evidence in the record to support the decision. So those are the key things. So following the procedures, your chairman will basically follow a script, which is, hasn't really changed too much over the last several years, and it's, we're all here to make sure that we don't prejudice anyone through the procedures we follow. One of the things to keep in mind when you're conducting a hearing is, there's an order of proceedings. The staff generally goes first, and then the applicant, and then you may hear from those opposed, and then rebuttal by the applicant. And then, usually, you hear from legal counsel and staff as they help advising you after the close of the record and the hearing. Staff will give you advice and help you apply the facts to the law. But that's not the time to ask questions of staff outside of the record. So, and I want to emphasize this point. During a hearing, Richard may get up and give his staff report, or Deborah may get up and give her staff report. You should ask questions of Deborah and/or Richard at that time. When the applicant gets up, they give their presentation. Ask questions about facts. If you want facts, you asked about those facts during the hearing. It's not a good idea to wait until the end and ask questions about facts, asking or soliciting facts. When you get to the end, after the close of the hearing and the close of the record, it's okay to ask staff to help you apply the facts that are already in the, in the record to the applicable criterion. But don't ask staff for new facts, or don't yourself raise new facts or enter new facts. Don't say, "Hey, remember that application we approved like six years ago, there was..." And you start describing the application. Well, you're not supposed to introduce evidence after the close of the hearing and the close of the record.
But Richard, they could ask after the applicant gets up and talks, or somebody gets up to speak in favor or in opposition. They still, because the record's still open, they can still turn to you, or to me, or Richard, and say, "How does this, does this make sense, and do you remember that happening, or what else?"
Yes, the appropriate time to ask questions is during the hearing. Don't wait until the hearing is closed and the record is closed, and then ask staff questions about facts. It's okay to ask questions of legal counsel and staff about facts in the record as applied to the applicable law. You can also talk to staff about interpretive issues. You know, "Richard, this criterion requires us to find that the property is not, or this application does not adversely affect the livability of the surrounding neighborhood. What does that mean?" And Richard would probably direct you to a staff report saying, "Well, on page six of the staff report, I break down the livability standard, and the first thing is, we define what the neighborhood is. And the second thing is, we define the factors that affect livability." So you would probably have that outlined, and staff could explain that to you. And staff's not going to go outside the record when, when doing that. But legal advice and helping you apply the facts to the law, interpretive issues, is not outside the record. It won't cause error. But if you start asking about facts after the close of the record, we can't help you. And that brings me to the final portion of it is deliberations. When you deliberate, obviously, you've maintained a certain professionalism throughout the hearing. You've asked questions without berating the participants, and you've maintained a professional demeanor and not indicating any bias. And when you get to deliberations, you get to talk about what you believe. "I believe the testimony of this person, that person was an engineer, and they testified as to this. I tend to believe that testimony over the testimony of the other person who didn't have that kind of education or experience, and just made statements that were unsupportive." So explaining and helping the staff to write the findings by explaining what you believe is, is helpful. Okay? And if you vote no, in most cases, you are going to be required to explain why you voted no. So it's very helpful to keep in mind at all times the applicable criterion, and to apply to each criterion the facts that are material and relevant to that showing compliance or noncompliance. And if you find that one of the criterion just hasn't been met, then you make a note of that, and then when you, if you vote no, you explain, "Well, this criterion has not been met, and here's why." So, and you don't want to vote no, and then get, have someone ask, "Well, we need to, for the record, have you explain," and, you know, just deer in the headlights kind of look. So if you're going to vote no, be prepared, think about, the applicant has to demonstrate compliance with each and every applicable criterion. One criterion that they don't get is enough to support a denial. Yet to get support and approval, they have to meet each and every one. So again, we're here to help, and thanks for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Appicello. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Commissioner coming up?
Excuse me, microphone. Okay. Richard, right before the deliberations part, you did actually put in there, "Please disregard irrelevant evidence focused on compliance of applicable criteria. The worst thing you can do is make the decision based on improper purposes or considerations." When an applicant, after the city's done their thing, and applicant's up there saying his part, are you available at that point in time, or are you going to possibly at that point in time, point out that maybe what they're saying right now has no relevance? I mean, or is that something that we have to pick up on our own?
Well, in part, I, I may look at the chair. I, when I, when I was in Florida in like the early 90s, I would pace in the back of the room. I didn't have a place to sit, and I would actually pace in the back of the room until the chair got, what is the county attorney pacing for? And I would come up, and I would, I might point something out. But generally, if the chair is paying attention, the chair will have people come to the podium and do the, "Okay, now it's your turn to speak," and they might talk. And, and if they start going off track and start talking about inappropriate things, like, "Well, you know, those opponents that just got up before, they, they're horrible people," or whatever, and they, or generally, opponents will generally get up and talk about how the applicant is a horrible person, and he's never finished a project, and that's not an applicable criterion. Sometimes opponents will get up and will say, "We don't want those kind of people in our neighborhoods," and they might say, you know, identify a certain race, or creed, or color, or religion, or disability. Those things are possibly violations of federal law. So, the chair can subtly try to get people back when they start to go afield by asking the question, "Can you point out to, for us the applicable criterion to which you're now testifying?" So you can kind of bring it back without getting right in somebody's face. And, and I, very few times in my career have I ever had to get up and, and the chair generally will gently get people back to the applicable criterion. You can't make a decision on criterion that don't apply. Now, if information gets in during the hearing, and now you're doing deliberations, I might, probably you guys will point out that this is inappropriate, but I might, if no one else does, say, "You might want to make an express finding that this is an inappropriate consideration for this decision." And if you have a lot of people in the room, and those people are all here and urging you to make the decision based upon the number of people in the room opposing it, well, that's not one of the criterion, so you might want to say in your findings. Now, we'll, you may direct us to do that, we may take it upon ourselves and, and put that in and tell you about it, but generally, you're going to want to call out inappropriate considerations and say, "We're not making a decision based upon this."
Thank you. Any other questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Robinson?
Thank you. I would like to point out that last sentence.
Can you hear microphone?
Sorry, yeah, that last sentence was particularly important in a couple of hearings we've had. It's, it's kind of the tyranny of the democracy when you have one applicant and 50 opponents, and you're listening to the one applicant for five minutes or 10 minutes, and then you listen to 50 opponents for an hour and 50 minutes, or something like that. So it's particularly important to retain that, that objectivity and the balance.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Appicello. Deborah, would you like to talk about our planning commission activities and goals for this year?
Do you want to do that, Richard, or do you want me to? Well, maybe we'll share the responsibility here. Well, we sent out a list of, of things that the planning commission will need to deal with in the coming year, and also then, a list of other things that we hope to get to, but we don't know that we will, or we don't have a particular deadline. This is meant to be a discussion of the planning commission's goals also, so if there are things that we didn't list that you are hoping to talk about in the coming year, we would like to hear about that. So, first of all, your responsibility is to deal with land use applications. So that would include applications for maybe a planned unit development, or a variance, or a conditional use. And we never know when those are coming in, or how many we'll have in any particular period of time, so it may be that some of the other things that we intend to do get, get shoved back a little bit if we have a lot of applications. As you heard, there are deadlines, so we don't have the luxury of choosing when to deal with those. Secondly, the first thing that I know that we're going to be dealing with is the parks and rec system plan. Because we've decided to approve this by ordinance, that means we're going to change the comprehensive plan to reflect this new parks, master plan, and goals that go along with it, goals, vision, and objectives. So, that is coming to you. Anytime we change the comprehensive plan, that involves the planning commission. And even though the parks board has already reviewed it and has been more active in the development of the plan, this is your opportunity to hold a public hearing, to find out about the plan, and, and to make a recommendation to city council. Miles, do you have something?
I have a question.
Uh huh.
I brought something in and gave it to, to your office, I think.
Kate, maybe?
Katie.
Actually, she gave it to me.
Okay. And I was wondering on the parks thing, because I think that we'll have a hearing on it.
Yes.
When it's brought to the city council, or vice versa. And I want to know if, if I'd have a conflict of interest in it, or if I can vote on it, or give my preference, because I think the parks and the, the plan that is in front of the commission and the council for the 20-year plan
Uh huh.
Has to be caught, caught up to current conditions. And I know from the Regatta Park, and that's the one I'm interested in, that it goes back to a deed restriction that's 85 years old. And it was given to the city by some people that wanted a, have a place for boat races. And they didn't give it to the city, they gave it to a committee that doesn't exist anymore. And I'm wondering what role I have, or can have, on getting that to, to the forefront of the plan when it, that comes to voting on it, or determining whether we'll support the 20-year plan, for example. Or is that passed?
Well, I haven't looked exactly at this document. If you're talking about, is it, if it's a legal issue, or something like that, that wouldn't necessarily be part of a long-range plan. It might be a problem that should be addressed, you know, but separately from, from the long-range vision and goals of the, of the plan. But Richard, if you've looked at it, maybe you can speak to that.
It's, there's, there's a legal issue there, and it's something to, well, I'll discuss with the city attorney, and then decide how to proceed. If you want to introduce that into evidence at the, at the hearing, you can, then, but your question is, then can you participate in the hearing as, as, as a decision maker? And that would be a legal question, but, which we would have to consider. You know, it's going to take some thought on that, so.
I think I would bring it up, because I think each park should have a particular purpose, and some of the parks may be the same, but some of the facilities are different, and they should be used as their, as, they are developed now, and that includes the new Ford Foundation grant that provided a beautiful stage in the park. And I'm concerned that it isn't going to be up to date, and I think that the planning commission is the first step to see that those things are brought up to current standards.
Have you looked at the plan to see, have you read the plan as it pertains to Regatta Park?
I haven't seen a specific notice of the Regatta Park and what it says.
Okay. What, what we'll do next time at our next meeting is, we'll be having a workshop on the plan, and I will make the presentation that, that we did for the park board and the city council at their workshop at the end of last year. And that will give you an opportunity to see what is, what we're showing for Regatta Park in terms of uses and any future plans. And then, you know, if you think that's going to be an issue that would actually change the plan, then we should address this, this deed restriction. Otherwise, you know, it's something that, that we can have Richard and the city attorney look at, and, and maybe address that in, in another way. I don't know that, I don't know that it influenced the, the way the plan was developed, but that would be something that we should take a look at.
Ms. Appicello, did you have something you wanted to say?
Just that there's a couple of different things going on here. Number one, you're the planning commission. As you just saw in this video, and the videos you've watched before, when you make decisions about legislative matters, yes, you have, you have more discretion, but what are you, what are you doing? You're looking at the proposal for consistency with the statewide planning goals and the comprehensive plan, and internal consistency with your zoning code, and you're not just going, "I'm the emperor of Rome, and way to go," or... going, "I'm the emperor of Rome, and way to go," or, you know, it's not this, or this. You have a specific task. This is not the Parks Board. You're not making recommendations about parks, and what we should do in specific improvements in the Parks Board. So you have a different take on this, and the reason why this parks is coming to you is because it's part of a larger comprehensive plan. It's not about the development of any specific park. The, whether or not the, I don't know if it's a pending application, or a future application for a special event permit, that has its own appeal process, and conditions imposed on special event permits have to be, are subject to an appeal process, that appeal goes to the city manager. That's not what you're here to consider. So, I'm just saying, there's a couple of different processes here, and perhaps this is not the body to get into that issue.
Thank you. Do any other commissioners have questions about the upcoming parks plan review?
So we'll have a workshop in two weeks, and then it'll come back to you for a public hearing, and then you will make a recommendation to the city council, and the city council will hold another public hearing. Okay.
The next thing is the review and making a recommendation on the new buildable lands inventory, housing needs assessment, and economic opportunities analysis. This is an inventory document that will help to form the basis of the new comprehensive plan. It's been in the works for some time, and we have a technical advisory committee meeting planned in March, and then after that meeting, we'll be bringing it to the, bring a draft to the planning commission for review and recommendation to the city council.
The next one is the Nelscott Plan, or Gap Refinement Plan, and this is about 200 acres that surrounds the new highway improvement in Nelscott. We have been working on this for over a year, probably a year and a half now. We were almost complete in the spring, and then ODOT, Oregon Department of Transportation, said, you know, "We really don't like this feature of this slip lane." Like, we were planning a lane similar to what goes in front of the Nelscott shops, except it was going to be on the other side of the highway, and further north. And they were concerned about the impact and the effect on the cars turning onto, or off of the highway, and possibly, you know, having stacking problems. And, so anyway, we kind of backed up. ODOT gave us more money to continue to pay our consultants to resolve that issue, and to revise the plan to provide, you know, another commercial area. So, anyway, that is now back on track, and we expect that we will probably have another project advisory committee meeting in the spring, and then follow it up with adoption hearings, so that will be coming to you in the spring. And the next one is transportation system plan implementing ordinance. We adopted the transportation system plan for the city in 2015, in December, and last year, we considered some changes to our comprehensive plan, and also to our zoning ordinance, and other parts of our city code, to implement that plan. For instance, one of the things we talked a lot about was bike parking, and another thing was, let me think, oh, traffic impact analysis that's required for development. So, we still have another, several items like that to do, so we'll be coming back with that ordinance, to make sure that we've got everything in our code that we need to implement the new transportation system plan.
The next thing is rezoning in Rhodes End. When Rhodes End was annexed a few years ago, we left the county zoning in place on Rhodes End, so it's still subject to the county zoning requirements, although we administer it. There was a, part of the settlement agreement on the annexation was that the city would not initiate rezoning for five years after the annexation. They did have a provision for the neighborhood association to request rezoning, which they have done. They provided draft provisions, which I've taken and put into our, our
Format?
Format, our ordinance format. And I had held it, I've held it back, waiting to see what the council did on whole with vacation rentals, because there'll be provisions relating to vacation rentals in the ordinance. So now that we're through that, we're able to bring it forward, so there'll probably be some community meetings this spring, and likely have it here at the planning commission this summer.
Is this type of citizen initiative rezoning common, or has it happened in a while?
We occasionally get requests, like for individual pieces of property, or like for a whole development, or something like that. It was just, again, this was part of the settlement agreement, that the city would not initiate anything. Meanwhile, in Rhodes End itself, is my understanding, there's been, there was some uncertainty, "Okay, what's going to happen in five years?" You know, "So we couldn't initiate it for five years, so what does that mean?" And so the neighborhood association sort of wanted to basically reach a decision, just bring it all to a head, and get the decision done. Concern about it might be adversely affecting property values, as people wait with the uncertainty of not knowing what's going to happen after the five years goes by, if anything.
Are we, as planning commission members, able to go to their meetings, or are we not supposed to, because that could create conflict of interest, I suppose?
Well, it's a potential to get ex parte communication, so if you get substantive information, you may, it would be good to disclose that. Again, it's going to be, it's going to be a legislative matter, but it's always good to disclose any information you receive from outside the hearings that there will be.
Do you have an opinion about that, Richard Appicello?
When a matter is legislative, if we're rezoning all of Rhodes End all at once, it's likely going to be legislative. But when you start getting into questions about drawing lines, we had this happen a couple of years ago. If you start talking about individual properties, and then the line between residential and mixed use will go here, it'll go around this one, it starts to look like it's about specific properties. So always caution, whenever you have the potential for drawing lines on a map, that's not just like, "Let's rezone all of this to a certain thing," but we start drawing lines, it starts to look quasi-judicial. So I'd always caution, get your evidence at the hearing, or be prepared, in the event it's deemed quasi-judicial, or we're following quasi-judicial procedures, make sure you disclose those ex parte communications.
It's all one zone in this case?
Yeah. In this case, if it turns out that way, and it's all one zone, it won't be deemed ex parte. But if it evolves, and sometimes these things change over time, we saw that two years ago, then you're going to want to make sure you kept track of when you, what meetings you were at.
First, first microphone.
That implies an ex parte communication can happen on the topic that's not an open case.
Not really. Generally, we start paying attention when the application has been submitted. Now, if it's real obvious, like they come in for a pre-application conference, or something, then we'll want you to disclose. But a lot of times, in an abundance of caution, we'll ask, you know, staff to put the minutes of community meetings and things into the record, so that there is a record of what happened. In legislative matters, even if you don't have quasi-judicial ex parte limitations, you still have a record. So if you're going to have a bunch of community outreach meetings, if one staff is attending or encouraging, we like to enter those things into the record, because it's part of the goal to public participation process.
The next thing is temporary uses ordinance, and this is something we've been considering at the staff level for some time, but what's precipitated action on it now is the upcoming eclipse in August. What this ordinance would do is allow uses on a temporary basis that aren't allowed now in the ordinance. The typical thing that we've run into in the past is like construction staging, for, you know, you could use some, a piece of property for your staging, for constructions nearby, on nearby property. And while construction staging isn't an ordinarily allowed use, off premises from where the construction's going on, we have, on a case-by-case basis, allowed that to proceed. And this just would codify the procedure for allowing that. And it also would provide an option for a much larger kind of temporary use thing, where we're talking about, we may be, we may want to authorize something citywide for the eclipse, or for some other events, such as, you know, the garage sale weekend, or those kinds of things, where we just want to do something in a broader area, whether it's a big area, or the city as a whole, or something, just to allow uses that aren't, again, on a temporary basis, that aren't ordinarily allowed.
What is the process for approving a temporary use ordinance? Is it similar to a regular ordinance, or is it abbreviated?
It's legislative procedure, so there'll be a hearing here at the, at the planning commission, and then you'll make a recommendation to the city council, and the city council will make a decision on whether to adopt it or not, or to modify it from what's proposed.
Thank you.
And then, there's a, just really sort of a minor revision to the general commercial provisions, changing theaters from a conditional use to a permitted use, which means it doesn't require a hearing. And then, theaters, indoor theaters, like movie theater, or where there's a play, or a performance, or something. Might be a stretch.
You would certainly call it, you know.
You need to speak into the microphones.
They would consider it theater, and call it artistic example.
It's possible, and we have had places where such performances have taken place, but they haven't been in theater, they've been usually in tavern, or something like that.
And that's, so that it's a permitted use now, I guess, is that right?
In a tavern, it is, yeah.
Maybe Kate could tell us about sign ordinance, do you want to?
I'm not really sure what the scope of the updates would be. Richard probably knows more about what he has in mind.
This is just, our sign ordinance has been in existence for a long time, and it is badly in need of revision, principally in terms of making it content neutral. There are provisions in it that allow signs based on their content, or prohibit signs based on their content, and that's illegal. What we have done in the administration of the ordinance is to disregard those content-based restrictions, but we need to codify it and make it content neutral on its face.
And I just, it wasn't drafted with the idea, "Hey, let's draft an illegal ordinance." It's just that the case law that's evolved over the last couple of years has pushed content neutrality out in front to a very, well, severe extent. So we're going to have to go and remove a lot of the provisions in the ordinance that define content.
So, our sign code that we work with now was adopted in 1994, so a lot of things have changed since 1994. The technology for signs has changed a lot. Other things that have changed are the ability for people to get flags on the internet. Actually, the internet happened since 1994. And so, what our code talks about with respect to flags may not really mean what people use for flags today, so that's what we gave as an example. Another thing that's been brought up to me by sign companies and merchants is that maybe our sign code doesn't really reflect what larger developments need, like a, you know, a multi-tenant place, like where Safeway is, or the Outlet Mall, but there may be others, that they, you know, they may be limited for what they can have, and maybe that's not the best approach. So it probably will be a community effort, where we'll have a committee that works on it, probably a bigger project, rather than just content neutrality, but that's to be determined, I guess.
Thank you.
Then, other things, the comprehensive plan, which was adopted back in the 90s, and has been amended a number of times, but has not been looked at comprehensively in quite some time. In fact, it was adopted in the 90s. I know we've been, technically, we've been in periodic review of it since 1996, because the county would not adopt one of our ordinance provisions as part of our periodic review. The Department of Land Conservation Development never really approved our changes that we did in 2000, 2001. So, we're trying to get beyond that, but get into some much broader changes to the comprehensive plan. The housing needs assessment, and economic opportunities assessment, buildable lands inventory, that is a big step towards doing that, as ours are the transportation system plan, the Nelscott area plan, all these things have been doing, the Parks Plan, the walking and biking plan. It's all things that feed into the, into a new comprehensive plan. The next big step we're going to take is a visioning process, and we're hiring a consultant to assist with that. We're going to be interviewing a couple of consulting firms later this month to pick one, and then to actually, they will be conducting the visioning process of a lot of public outreach. And some of you may have heard last night, talking to the city council about it, the idea is not to just have a meeting here, where the usual people show up, but to go out into the community, and reach out to all kinds of people, people who are underrepresented, or may be reluctant to come, or may be unable to come to one of these regular meetings due to obligations, that they have family obligations, or work obligations, school, or whatever. And just get as broad a participation in the community as we can possibly get through any means that would be appropriate, to get, what do people want the community to be like in 20, 30, or 40 years?
You've had a really good track record doing that with the Parks Plan Development, also the Nelscott Gap, where you provided many opportunities for the public to participate and give their feedback.
Great, thank you. We want to do even more. We've got, we have funds to be able to do it in innovative ways, so we're going to be pursuing as much as we can on that. And also, the next thing on the list is the Villages at Cascadehead Preliminary Master Plan. It's another plan in existence since the 90s. The preliminary master plan for the Villages at Cascadehead provided that there would be 1,829 dwelling units up in the Villages at Cascadehead. That may not have reflected economic reality, or engineering reality. There's some very serious topography, questions about how to serve There's some very serious topography, questions about how to serve some of the higher elevations with water. Certainly, if we're going to move into the higher elevations in the northern areas of the Villages at Cascadehead property, there would need to be a new, probably million-gallon reservoir, water tank put in, which would cost at least a million dollars. So that's something to weigh in developing the plan. So we're hiring a consultant again in this case to help with developing a new Preliminary Master Plan for the Villages at Cascadehead that takes into consideration, better than the existing plan, the engineering and the economic realities. 1,800 units, it would take, at our normal building rates in Lincoln City, it'd take at least 30 years to build that many dwelling units. And, because we build like 40 to 60 dwelling units a year in the city, and 1,800, if we didn't build them anywhere else in the city but only in Villages at Cascadehead, it would take at least 30 years to build that many, which is not likely to happen. So we want something that's more realistic that reflects the realities there.
Any questions?
I have a quick question on that. Your building and the needs assessment and where we're going to be at, just in the information just before that, does it take into account any of the Cascadehead estimates?
It takes into account things like steep slopes, wetlands, those kinds of things that would render probably some fairly large areas of the Villages at Cascadehead unbuildable.
But it then, it does include that potential land use?
It includes...
With limitations?
It includes a lot of the villages. Buildable lands inventory is you take all your land, subtract out the stuff that's not buildable or is already built on, and then what you have left is the buildable lands.
True.
So this will...
Have that in it.
Have that in it, yeah.
Okay.
Was the master, was the master plan developed by the original developer of that, the 1,800 lot?
Right.
Who made the original plan?
I forget the firm that did it. It was, but it was the original property owners, you know, hired a consultant to develop the plan.
Okay. And that was developed a long time ago regardless?
Yes. Yeah, that was, I know the city first approved it in 1996 and then approved a revision of it in 1998. And then I think less than a dozen of those 1,829 units have been built at this point. And then the next thing is, a big thing is addressing affordable housing. And I'll probably, I want to go back to the Comprehensive Plan because the emphasis in the plan on housing, economic development, transportation, natural hazards, those four big areas that we're going to be looking at and taking a close look at. And this affordable housing provisions here will be tied to that in part, but also just there are things we can do in the short term that can hopefully help out on affordable housing. And a lot of it is some relatively minor ordinance changes providing for tiny houses and big houses, as those are technically defined, maybe changing some of our accessory dwelling unit standards to make it more attractive to people to build them, those kinds of things.
Yes.
Question, Richard, if you have. Are we, do we have a really, let's say, in this process, do we have like a very well-defined affordable housing definition versus maybe workforce housing or if they're the same or...
Well, what we've been trying to, we've been calling affordable housing workforce housing as differentiated from subsidized housing. Subsidized housing is typically is considered, people who make 60% or less of the median income in the community or the county can afford the subsidized housing or affordable housing. The workforce housing is 60 to 120% of the, if you could afford 60 to 120, if you earn 60 to 120% of the average income, and if you would not be cost burdened by the housing, then housing would be considered workforce housing and affordable. Cost burdened is if you have to use more than 30% of your income, your gross income, to pay for the housing, then you're cost burdened and it doesn't meet the definition of workforce housing. So we're trying to be able to provide for that housing that meets that middle, people in the middle there, not the people who need subsidized housing and not the people who...
It's a very close distinction.
Sorry?
So it's a very close distinction, those two. People are very much floating on the line.
We have in our Housing Needs Analysis charts that show the average cost of home and then, you know, what level of income would be required to purchase that average price of home. And, you know, there's obviously a gap, a serious gap. And there are other kinds of analysis in that Housing Needs Study that we're doing and it should be coming to you soon, so you'll get those answers.
Right.
Just hoping that we had those definitions so it would be used.
It would be nice to be really, have a really, a number, you know, that would be really simple, but it's more complicated than that.
But to the extent we can, we will make that clear. So, you know, there, sometimes there's debate on what percent, you know, of average income you consider, but we have settled on 60 to 120.
Right, right. At least we know what we're playing with.
Right, right.
A couple of years ago, the owner of Lighthouse Square proposed a Big Box revision to our ordinance that limits the size of an individual store or building to 60,000 square feet footprint. And in the end, the city voted, decided not to change the ordinance, but asked that the staff come back with another proposal, basically. And we have not ever come back with that other proposal, just simply because we've had other things that took priority. But I think this might be part of what we address in the Comprehensive Plan too, on, you know, what do we want for our community? Do we want it to be a place where there are Big Box retailers? What we call Big Box retailers typically might have stores of 120,000 square feet. We are not prohibiting development of a store that size, but we're saying it would have to be at least two stories because the footprint itself has to be 60,000. In our town where we have limited flat area, large lots like that available, we have to talk about whether or not we want to try to make room for Big Boxes that would be all one level. Or if we were going to do that, how would we want, would want to do that so that it would still blend into our community of, you know, small retailers and cottages. So, anyway, that's, we need to come back with that at some point and have that conversation.
And then the Oregon Department of Transportation, ODOT, is going to be funding some improvements to Highway 101 between Nyatso and Logan Road intersection. And it occurred to us that it might be timely to consider an area plan for Logan Road, Highway 101 intersection area, Lighthouse Square. There's a substantial amount of vacant land in there or underdeveloped land and it's a good time to develop a plan for that and see if we can, actually, first thing, see if we can get some funding particularly from ODOT to help us with developing a plan so that we could do that. Sort of similar to what we've done with the Nelscott Gap area, develop just another area plan for that.
Implementation of approved plans.
Right. Well, now we have, we have some plans and we'll have more by the end of the, you know, in the next few months. And then how are we going to make those things happen that we set as goals for ourselves?
In particular, what ordinance revisions are we going to need to implement the policies?
It looks like we're going to be more than busy in 2017.
Yep, we've got plenty to do. If we get through all this, it will be wonderful.
We'd like to hear from the commissioners on, you know, I mean, some of the things, as you saw, we have to do, and there's really not a choice or prioritizing for that. But do you have any reflections on some of the other things or is there anything that we missed that you would like to try to work into our schedule for the year?
Well, I realize that the Comprehensive Plan is not in that half to do, but I'm thinking that we have to do that one because if we don't get that one done, we're going to be missing a lot of opportunity and need, especially in the affordable housing area. So I think the more, the sooner we have that number, the situation, you know, well-defined to us, and then I think we need to go look at builders and try to get them invested in creating a recovery plan for where we have that gap.
Okay.
So I'm kind of a, that Comprehensive Plan should fall somewhere, and Villages at Cascade because I think maybe we can use those two together to maybe move some of our objectives forward, but...
I don't, I wouldn't put much weight into where we're divided up and if we must do and it would be nice, it would be nice to do where we want you to do it. We want to move all these things forward. The Comprehensive Plan won't be done in 2017. It'll take at least a year and a half probably to do that. But that's because it's a big deal and it, there's a lot of process that goes in.
Is there any kind of state deadline on coming up with the new Comprehensive Plan?
No. We used to be, a community of our size used to be subject to periodic review. We no longer are, although as I said, technically, we're still under periodic review from 1996, you know, from 21 years ago. But there is no requirement. It was just, I just think ours is really badly overdue.
Is there any reason for us not to add a deed restriction to maybe some of these Big Box stores that would like to build here, whether it be a two-story or whatever, for them to build some workforce housing while they're at it?
We couldn't have a deed restriction because we can't, we can't burden the land that way. But if there is a, an approval criterion for a Big Box store that requires some standard that would be met by having them provide workforce housing, then yes. It comes down to just looking at the criterion.
When I made, when I was having a discussion with the commission and the council last, last time we talked about Big Boxes, one of the suggestions was if we want to allow 120 square foot or whatever, single story store, then we should perhaps consider requiring a second story of either parking or affordable housing or, you know, something else that would benefit the community and also make that, make better use of that space.
Yeah, that's a good idea, okay.
One thing similar that we've done with, with planned unit developments is we said you get so many units per acre or something, but you get a bonus if you do X, Y, and Z, you get additional units. And so it could be, when we do the Big Box amendments, we could have something that says, "You get a 60,000 square foot footprint, but if you do X, Y, and Z, then you get more," something like that. And then you would have the ability to apply that, those conditions.
I want to bring up before I forget, when Doug Bryson sent us an email that he was not going to be here tonight, he did have one suggestion and that was he would like the commissioner of the city to consider some kind of a color palette for our downtown businesses. And that may fall within the topic of aesthetics that we'll probably cover in the Comprehensive Plan, how far we want to go in trying to create an image for the city.
Thank you very much. Time for reports and comments. Anything more to add?
No, I've talked out.
Mr. Appicello? Planning commissioners? I would like to thank Bruce Robinson for a job well done as Chair of our Planning Committee and especially thank him for spending time with me last week to share his experience as a Chair of the Planning Commission and his knowledge, and I want you to know I appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
And let's see, anything else? There are no opportunity for public comment. We don't have a public here in our chambers tonight. And our future agenda items, the next meetings, the next meeting is Tuesday, February 21st at 6:00 PM, and we will have a work session on the Parks and Recreation System Plan. The meeting is adjourned.